Roll call of attendance, please.
Done.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, please. I move that we add committee discussion of our committee structures. I would like to swap with Mike Chevalier the Personnel Committee and the Facilities Committee.
Second.
I'd like to add that as for A.
Second.
Any discussions? So we're going to vote to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we should start with that.
I'd like to move that Mike and I switch committees. Mike has some additional expertise in facilities that I don't have, also with his role in the Environmental Commission. I think he is better suited to the Facilities Committee than I am. And Mike and I have talked about this possibility, and I would take on the Personnel Committee in his place.
My second.
Any other discussions?
It makes sense, since he has a relationship with a staff member, so it does make sense.
Do you have a motion and second on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to talk a little bit tonight about goals, superintendent goals and board member goals. Barb and I talked about these a bit, trying to keep things fairly centered. We don't want to have too many goals for anybody to be successful with. And then Lucy's help, their format in a way that was reasonable for both sets. So can you be part of talking about yours?
Sure. So in both, and maybe I'll kind of just address them both together, the superintendent goals and the school board goals, we, when Judy and I worked on these, we talked about keeping them pretty consistent together. And the first one, looking at mine, had to, the first goal has to do with relationships as a new superintendent, getting to know people and strengthening relationships throughout the community, both internally, inside the organization and externally. And as part of that, of course, there's a role that you all play in helping me with that as well. And so in this, again, with Lucy's help, just trying to break it down so that you could see how it is that I'm thinking about it, both, so with the board, administrative team, staff and other stakeholders. So I don't know if you want me to go through all the details, because I know you've had them ahead of time. One of the things, so we talked about the details of what that could look like, also kind of the timing. And with this section, with the timing, we were trying to show both how the timing for working on this, but also who would be involved in that. And so I've started filling part of that in. One of the things with the reporting structure would be, I maybe would, I'm looking to you for some input on how you would like that to be done as well. Some of this would be through board notes. You would just, I would keep you up to date on who I've met and work I'm doing with various stakeholders throughout the district. I'm not sure what else you would like for me to do to show the progress on these goals, so I'm open to that as well, but I didn't want to fill it in with all board notes. I know, so Nicole is here, and I know that there is some part of the superintendent evaluation process that has traditionally been kind of a mid-year evaluation and likely some survey data as well. Do you want to talk at all about what that has looked like in the past?
Yep. We would usually do a mid-year, which you guys all know, have the goals and the superintendent competencies, and we met as a small committee and condensed those. So right now, I'm assuming we'll go with that same format, but I wanted to be here in case we do, and we'll talk about that. So I send that out, remind you guys, get a little time, and then we get that back, and Patrick also helps. There is also the option of sending it out to your administrative team and sharing that with the board, so that's also a possibility, and then we'll do the same thing at your end. So as far as I know, I've kept the timelines where they're at. Typically, this conversation happens earlier, but I still think we can do the same timelines if these are moved forward from tonight.
Anybody, Lucy?
I'd like to add two things to the conversation. One, in thinking about the superintendent evaluation process, we use a process based upon the MSBA process, and MSBA this year is looking at revising and improving that process, because it was new to them as it is new to us. So I'd hope that we would just stick to what we have right now, see what MSBA comes up with during this year, and then also with Barb's feedback, then think about making changes to that process over the summer into next year, instead of trying to do too many changes at once. And I think it's hard for Barb to evaluate a process she hasn't been through. So I think we should keep as close as the form process as we could. The part of this says report, because some of these formats come from work I've done before and work we were doing previously. That report piece was added there in terms of thinking about, and this really doesn't fit it, because this is such an ongoing piece, it's going to happen all year, but this is really to show the board how some of these sub-things happen in September and October, you know, January, February, and there'd be different times things would come to the board, instead of all of a sudden in June saying, well, here's my goals, and this is everything I've done over the past year. But it helps assure that there's regular check-ins with the board through either the board notes or other meetings. I know in the later goals, it makes more sense. And it's shown in the work Barb's done in the chart that she's got specific timing there, August, September, you know, through March and things like that. And so that was that reporting piece, is trying to think about how that information is shared on an ongoing basis with the board.
I also have in there to attend MSBA board trainings with you or other professional development with you, and I didn't actually know if you had any, if you had signed up for any Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, whatever it may be. So that's why it's also left open there, but I do have that on there for that reason.
Stacy, did you have something?
So I think if somebody could just remind me if I have this correct in my memory, the superintendent, Barb would then, when we get to that mid-year, she would be able to say, these are the things I've done, right? She can present that to us, and then we fill out the evaluation. Is that right?
Progress indicators.
Right, right. But she, because it's hard for us to remember it all, and she can lay it out and say, this is how I did it. And so there's not a need to have a report on a weekly basis or anything. That kind of serves as the report, in a sense.
Sure. Any comments?
Some of the things, and maybe I wasn't clear, some of the things, it's nice to have a report at a board meeting. So you're right, for the evaluation piece, that's the way it's structured. But then there are some things, like when we get to some of the later goals, like strategic planning, we don't want to wait until midterm and into the year to get updates on strategic planning. And so it's a way to just show that across the year, we'd hope there'd be check-ins, maybe, you know, twice, you know, before the holidays and then afterwards, you know, in the springtime or whatever. It was a way to think about these goals spread out over time. But if the reporting column doesn't make sense to people, it can also be removed, if it's not helpful.
If it says "ongoing," then kind of use your discretion as to when we need to be updated?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any comments? Can you talk about any particular ones?
Well, I don't know with the first one, with the first goal, if there's anything in particular that you have any questions on. There are two more goals. If you, there's the strategic planning. I've said before, I'll just mention again, that in my mind, this would be something that we would start maybe around January or so, in part because that gives me a few months, about six months, to get a sense of, some, informally gets more sense of who we are as a district, and starting it earlier than that would, I wouldn't suggest that that would be helpful. It's also a process that, would it be very inclusive of community, staff, students and administrators, board members? So it's a very inclusive process, and it'll take some time. We don't have a very rich strategic plan at this time, and I think we, starting over, it would be worthwhile, and that will take some time. And so I've roughly, from my experience, this is what I've put out there, is some rough timing on how long I think it would take to get this initiated. It wouldn't be complete by the end of the school year, but it at least would, those steps would have started, and that's roughly how it would look. I do have that October, November start time, and that's in part because I know of a training coming up, and we will have at least Patrick attending that one. It's in interest of his, so there's some starting of some internal capacity building that way. But the actual process would be starting in January.
Would it be helpful to have a board member also attend the training with Patrick? Or will you be attending that, or is that?
We could certainly talk about this. So this is a training that, we, well, we can talk about this, depending on what you'd like to do. So I found that Farmington's administrative team was going to, they're going, they're planning to do a restart of their strategic plan, or not a restart, a refresh of their strategic plan, and there are a number of administrators that hadn't been through strategic thinking. So that's what that is, so I just kind of jumped in on that. And so that doesn't, but, so I don't know, I don't know what that could look like for board members as well, but I can ask and see how that would be. And if that is something that someone's interested in, we could look at that as well. So that wouldn't be a problem. So that's the strategic planning. And then the last one, obviously, we are going to be talking about the operating levy in a little bit here, but in general, the operating levy obviously is tied to a lot of our budget discussions that we need to have as a board. And so you'll see Bill's name all over this, and in fact, the first one with talking about budget reporting and engagement, Bill has a finance timeline that he's going to be sharing with you today, and so, and it's a nice, long one-pager, so I thought that I just would put per finance timeline on there for your reference, because it's very detailed. So, and you'll see in here that there is a combination of talking about the budget process and engagement with the community, and also specifically calling out some things related to the operating levy and the engagement around that. And so you see Bill's name quite a bit, also Alice's name, and Laura, and some of the administrators as well, and that has regarding their jobs and what it is their expertise that they bring to this process. So that's why that, this one looks a little bit different in that regard.
Any additional comments?
Just like that.
Yeah. Actually, I just think it was that the stakeholders are pulling in other people to be working on, it's just a great idea.
Well, and truly, you know, all the work that the superintendent does is, you know, alongside all of the administrative team and others' support. So though these are my goals, this is our team's goals as well, so.
Right. And our school board goals, you have them in front of your, also we tried to keep sort of hand in glove with what the superintendent's goals were. Does anybody have comments on those? Maybe Lucy, you want to talk about how you?
If I can make a few comments, because I did take, Judy and Barb worked very hard on the actual goal areas, and then I just took them and moved them in to the format and trying to think about things, the details are the things I've added. And they're completely open for discussion and negotiation, they were just things I thought of, and I changed the end columns a little bit in terms of thinking about, you know, the meeting reports and how we're going to share that information. But I added a column about board members, too, because if you look down, when we look at the second goal under collaborative relationships and partnerships between local leaders and organizations, Judy's very much involved in 916, obviously, her role on that board, Kevin's role with the EEA and the 622 integration piece. So I've tied some specific members to that, and there are a number of places where there's blanks, and there's some places that say "all," so I don't know if board members have strong feelings about being added to certain things. I mean, Mike serves on the AMSD board, and so I've got, I've put specific names in spots where it seemed to make sense, and to make sure it was clear that those people are sort of responsible for those areas. I think everyone's responsible, but these people would be, have a little bit heavier lifting in those areas because of their roles on those committees and things.
Anybody have comments on those?
I just, I like what you wrote up. I, okay, and I'm not saying this just because I'm the delegate, but to write resolutions for the delegate assembly, do we want to put that under MSBA goals? I mean, just an idea, because we have been doing that. I mean, is that elected officials? I mean, I don't know, if you wanted to call it out under MSBA or not.
Do you think it fits under that first item under MSBA, continue to be active at MSBA to keep appraised of and influence key legislative priorities, and then just add some additional people there?
It's a big interpretation, so.
Right, that's what we want to do, if you, yeah. Or if you just want to put resolutions in that box as well, just so it's on there. Yeah, yeah.
Sort of add a line underneath that. Do you want me to edit that and send it back?
Edit to priorities and resolution.
I can make that edit and send it to Barb and have her send it back out.
It was just an idea, because it's something that we do spend some time on, usually.
Anything else? Board retreat.
Okay, so I put this on here. I am very thankful that you were all okay with canceling the board retreat that was supposed to happen my first or second week on the job, and postponing it to another time. But I would like to see what we could do about getting that back on our calendars, or talk a little bit about timing for that, and then maybe we can send out some dates that might work. But timing-wise, I'll throw out there the idea of maybe doing it in January or February, and see where that takes us in terms of, you know, starting a new year, and with your, if that would work with your schedule, and maybe potentially doing it on a night that would be typically a study session, maybe starting a little early. Those are, that's my, my starting offer, how about that? What do you think about that?
So it would be taking a study session in January or February, extending it and setting it. Study session, labeling it retreat, and then digging into some of the strategic planning things we would be starting at that point in time?
Well, and we can set the agenda at that point and decide what it is, but certainly strategic planning would be something. It could be, you know, working together as a board. We haven't done, we haven't done board norms with me, I don't know when the last time was that you did that. Yeah.
When we look at the.
I don't think we've done them since I've been on.
We do them every January. I don't, see, I'm sorry, I don't know, but there are a number of things that we could do during that time, depending.
You know, just because we've done things that way, and just because we always have it at that meeting, doesn't matter. You know, we are certainly able to do it differently, and have your new ideas to sort of prompt us along, you know, we really don't have to do things just because we always do.
I like the proposal of using an existing study session to be easier in terms of calendars, in terms of. Finding a time, because it would already be on the calendars, and just extending that a little bit. I don't know if you need to look at calendars in terms of thinking about the subcommittees, because oftentimes, subcommittees meet prior to meetings, and if it would make a difference than if it was February, January, February. January, we also have the MSBA leadership conference, a number of us go to, which is a lot of time. And so I lean more towards February for that reason. There might be things from the MSBA time that would be helpful to us.
Looking at other committees that might happen.
Would that work?
Who are the finance committee meeting before the study session in February?
In February.
How about before the January? Do you have the whole schedule, Bill, or not?
No, January 24th is the study session.
Right, but is there a committee meeting before that?
I don't have one listed. I tried to put them all in my calendar.
And do we, we make sure that our study session isn't the same, at the same time as the MSBA calendar, right?
Wasn't that something that Laura looked into, right?
A couple of years ago.
Okay. So that kind?
This year, yeah.
Oh, that's what it was, okay.
Usually move it. It's after MSBA, because MSBA is the 15th. The study session's the next week.
Neither of the meetings conflicted with MSBA, so we didn't have to change that.
Right. So if we'd have our regular meeting in January, then we'd have MSBA, and then we'd have.
Board retreat.
The board retreat.
Is that too much?
I would be concerned about the finance committee timelines and moving those around. I look to Bill, I guess, because of your expertise, obviously, in this area. If we were to switch finance committee to January, would that be problematic, I mean, in terms of thinking of all the moving pieces that go with finance? I mean, if we could do that, that would be one option, and we could open up February again, or we could just go with January.
So to answer your question, yes, we could move the finance committee to January. What we would lose would be some momentum on the 1920 budget that we could share with the finance committee at that time. But we could certainly, we bring that finance committee back in April, and we'll still be discussing the 1920 budget, so we could just update them at that time. So if we had to move it to January, that'd be fine.
So that would work.
Yeah, so we saw the two options, January and February?
Laura, if you look at the.
Well, I've given my preferences, anyone else have a preference?
Your preference is to do the board retreat in February and move the finance committee to January.
If it, as long as Bill's science, it's okay, yes. But I mean, January works for me as well, so I wasn't sure if anyone else had a preference.
Does anyone else have a preference?
No.
With that school board meeting, February would be February 14th, it'd be Valentine's Day.
Does that change anything?
Isn't that a perfect?
That's the regular meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, good.
So, yeah, that would be the only thing, it would be February 28th, so we're getting two months down the road into the new year.
So Barb, I've been thinking about the strategic planning, if that were to be part of the topics and goals, is that too far into it, or would it be better to be further down the timeline?
Depending on what it is that you would like, depending on what it is that you would like, I suppose, as your agenda for strategic planning within the board meeting. I mean, if that is, or in the board retreat, if that is something.
I think we'd like that in the retreat. But is the end of February too late? Too late for you?
Well, I can, I can work with whatever we decide on that. I, so I guess, I am not as busy with the MSBA work that you will be working with the week before the study session. I guess my thought was with the January one, it's the start of the year. I mean, that's where I was going with that. And so my thought was that's a good time to start. And that'll be about the time we would start strategic planning. I don't have those dates in stone or anything, it's just about the time, if that made sense.
January's great.
So then why don't we do the January?
January 24th. So starting at 4:00, 4:30 or something, is that what you're thinking?
Something like that, where we start just a little bit earlier? So it's January?
January.
Okay, thank you.
So the January 24th one.
Budget.
Thank you. So on the screen and in your board package, you have the proposed finance and budget calendar for 2018-19. So as Barb mentioned, this is fairly detailed, and it's that way on purpose, really, the purpose here is to have a conversation in August and try to lay out what our 18-19 finance calendar is going to look like, and then even some projections for 19-20 in terms of budget preparation for next year, and to have that conversation in August. So that way, we're not having a conversation in May about things that we wish we would have done in November, right? So that's really the main purpose here. It is overly detailed.
Appropriately detailed. It's not overly detailed. It's perfectly detailed.
And this is the same one, very similar to last year, so you're going to see some similarities here. So I'll just start with the memo. We all know our budget process, really the four-part continuous process, each part requiring board inspection and open to public comment. So we're really starting with the property tax levy, which for our school district this year will start in September, specifically with the study session on September 27th, where the board will be asked to approve the preliminary levy for the 2018 pay 2019 levy limitation certification report. And then this year, the truth and taxation report, I'm skipping through here, but I'm still on the memo page, will be on December 13th. And really, why I highlight the first start of the property tax levy this year is related to the November election, okay? So we're going to have a different situation this year, where our preliminary levy that the board is asked to approve in September could be different than the final levy in the truth and taxation presentation in December, if the levy in November is passed. So just important to know that, that those two numbers may be different this year. And then the preliminary budget process, we all remember that from last year, we'll start that right away in January, even though it does not need to be approved at the board level until June. And so we'll look at everything from budget projections to staffing projections to enrollment, and give ourselves a good amount of time to wade through those during the winter months. And then the final revised budget, this year for the 2018-19 year, I will bring a revised budget to the board for discussion in December and action the first meeting in January. And so people ask, why do we need a revised budget, right? Why can't you live within your preliminary budget for the entire year? It's a fair question. Things like state aid, you know, a lot of times we have to create a budget and approve the budget, the board has to approve the budget before the legislature decides what they're going to do from a state aid standpoint. And if that's significantly different than budget projection, that requires a revised budget. Also, things like enrollment changes, contract settlements, those can be significant budget impact, and so it's important to revise the budget for that reason. And then finally, our annual financial report and fiscal audit, that MMKR is scheduled to present this year in November, and I know everybody always looks really forward to that report.
I like it. I like that part. I'm looking forward to it.
Skipping to the back page, and I won't go over every line here, but I'm just going to skip through what I think are some important timeline events, and then certainly take any comments that you would have regarding why we're doing it at this time, or if you'd like to see something moved or discussed as to why we're doing it, when we're doing it. So the September 13th board meeting, if MDE gets the levy limitation certification reports out as scheduled, we will bring that to the board for discussion at the first meeting, and then action at the second meeting, so sort of a reversal there. Discussion at the regular meeting, action at the study session, just in line with what we have to do on the preliminary levy and getting that approved by the end of September. You can see fast forwarding to November 15th, that's when we're scheduled to have our audit presentation from MMKR. We do not have a study session in November or December scheduled, and so the next meeting in December then would be the 2018 pay 2019 truth and taxation presentation, and that really kicks off the budget process already for 19-20. So after we pass the truth and taxation presentation, we will know what our levy revenue is for the next fiscal year 19-20. Moving down to January 10th, that's when we have the current year revised budget going to the board for approval, so the first meeting in January, and then right away, we turn around at the end of January and start looking at 2019-20 preliminary budget. So we'll start by looking at assumptions and scenarios, and then we'll look at budget impact in between the end of January to the first meeting in April, where we will look at the budget in total, all funds, to include things like food service, community debt service. That really gives us two and a half months to look at the budget in total, even though that doesn't have to be approved until June. From the end of January through the first part of April will give us two and a half months to really look at the 19-20 budget. So it's important to create that margin, in case there's anything we need to talk about at length there. At the end of April, we'll look at the quarter three budget update, and that's really the first important year-to-date report, because then we'll be three-quarters of the way through 18-19, and you can get a good look to see if we're tracking from a budget to actual standpoint for the current year. And then finally, we'll track down to June 13th, if I could keep up on my spreadsheet here, where the budget in total for 2019-20 will be brought to the school board for formal approval, which leaves us one emergency board meeting the end of June, if we had to have it, to have the board approve the budget for 19-20 as required by statute by the end of June. So after all that, if there's any questions on why things are at the dates that they are, this is very similar to last year. Last year's budget process was challenging, but I think starting early allowed us to have a lot of time to discuss the difficult decisions that we needed in order to get the budget passed.
I have questions, I'm sorry, now that I've had you, now that you've read it out loud to me. So thanks for doing that. The assumptions and scenarios, when, is, I see that it's listed a few times, I would assume it's so that we can have discussion and input. And then by February 28th, that's the point at which we, or, sorry, yeah, February 28th
And then by February 28th, that's the point at which we, or, sorry, yeah, February 28th, that's the point at which we all say, these are our budget assumptions that we're going to use so that we can move forward on staffing? Is that how we do it?
Exactly right.
Okay.
So, just to provide an illustration, one of those assumptions that we'll want to have, to have agreement on is what the state aid is going to be for 1920. Right? The legislature's in a funding year in, in calendar 19 and we will want to build our budget based on an assumption on what we think we're going to get received from the state in 1920. So, it's important to determine those before we look at the corresponding staffing impact.
Okay. And then, as a board, do you all, also, are there certain parameters, assumptions that you also put out there for us as, and what would those, what are some of those that you would typically say as administration, we expect you to? Are there certain guidelines?
We, we did give you one for the next year, which I thought was for this year, the one and a half percent is what you typically have gone with. I mean, that's...
Okay, so, I'm sorry. So, I didn't mean to put everyone on the spot. I just, so I'm thinking about my own process that I'm accustomed to, so I'm sorry. And I always have to start this with, I'm sorry, I'm using my, that's all I've got is the experience I've had before. Okay? So, when I say, this is how I'm used to doing it, this is where it comes from. But, so, for example, I know you've had, you had, I've seen, you've talked about being below the exu class size average, for example.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
So, this is what I'm talking about. And it's important to me because as we talked in a little bit here about when we do our levy update, these are some things I want to be able to talk about. And so, I, in my mind, that is part of a budget assumption, is that you're saying, you know...
Class size.
Go, go take care of this, but these are the assumptions we're working with so that then we can come back to you and say, these are, these are the constraints that we have. I mean, so it's a conversation in that regard, so...
Didn't we come up with something when we were, had the enrollment committee, a list of criteria?
Right.
That, I would say, should be used.
So, the guiding principles are different for you than, or is that part of your budget assumption work, is using those guiding principles?
The guiding principles on enrollment impact the budget because that impacts how many students come into the district, which is where the money comes from. Right? So, that's part of it. But then there were other things and so it wasn't a formal meeting where we said, here on the agenda, here are assumptions. But over the course of time, I think assumptions have come out. And I think Bill knows a number of those from discussions, but we haven't been real good about having a deliberate conversation. And, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that'd be very good and healthy for the board to have that conversation at some point about those assumptions. I think Bill has done a very nice job of building it into his planning, but it hasn't happened as structured as formally as it could. Is that a good summary?
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay.
So, by having those conversations during, while Bill is working through the assumptions, then we would know from that, by, based on those assumptions, we could move forward with our staffing plan. I mean, this is, this is what I assume.
Right. I think staffing for us is very, very difficult because it's based on enrollment. And our enrollment is based upon open enrollment, is based upon move-ins and move-outs and we're a small enough district where that is so impactful...
Right.
...to our bottom line.
And I'd say that, I feel like, when I talk to Bill about all of that, I feel like he has a really good handle on...
I fully agree.
Okay, so, in my mind, that's part of our budget assumption process too, is using what Bill has in terms of his understanding of the way, you know, our history of open enroll. I mean, like, he, he has a good handle on that too. So, in my mind, that's part of it as well, as a budget assumption.
Yes. I would say.
This is, I'm just, I'm just looking for clarification. I'm sorry.
District size, building size, all of those.
And you'll remember, we moved the kindergarten registration up a month this year and so that's factored in here as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Also, we know there's new building still continuing that will probably, the new homes in Hugo, so, so that would be part, I just see it all fall under that umbrella.
Thanks. I just, I was just looking for clarification. Thank you. I think too, Bill, over the last year, he's done a really good job of coming to the board and asking questions as he's needed to, to understand our assumptions when we haven't been clear. And so, I think over the past year, as Bill's come into the district, because it's been just over a year now, it's hard to believe, that that has happened, you know, through that conversation and through that, that questioning and that has been very helpful to us, I think, having you come when you've had those questions about what about, these kinds of things. So, I appreciate you willing to reach out to us when we need to provide additional information so you can do the work that needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on budget? I like that it comes back all the time. You know, front, front and center. Software changes.
Yeah, so, just a quick update here. So, we, we've discussed ties quite a bit. Patrick's been a big part of this and, and there's been quite a work done, quite a lot of work done behind the scenes in terms of where we're going to go from an HR and finance software standpoint moving forward. Ties, this is just, the purpose here is just an update on our recommendation. So, ties as we know it will sunset their current software platform after the current year. So, after 2018-19 on June 30th, 2019. And so, this summer, over the last few months, we've had presentations from three different vendors and you can see them listed down below. So, we had Skyward in, out of Stevens Point, Wisconsin. Power School, which is sort of integrated with, with ties now moving forward, that they're going to run some of their platforms out of California. And then we did have Smart Technologies. They have five regions in Minnesota, so we had them in as well. Smart really specializes in some smaller outstate school districts. That's why they have the regions separated, so they have a region in Duluth, Marshall, Moorhead, Mankato and, and somewhere else. And then you have our current price with ties. And all of these prices are projected over five years in order to give a summary because with any new software, you're going to have an initial investment and then some ongoing fees. And so, the best way to show the cost projections is really over the five-year term. Okay? And so, our recommendation based not, not only on price, but also on, from a service and just a platform standpoint, is to move forward with the Skyward software, starting with the 2019-20 school year. And so, if we do that, 1920, July 1, 2019, sounds like a long ways away, but planning and data transfers will begin later this fall in November so that we're ready to go. We're going to do some things here with payroll, so payroll is easier to run on some type of calendar year-end versus finance on the fiscal year-end, so we'll want to make sure we're fully prepared on that side as well. So, I did include the Skyward software proposal, if you, if you would like to take a look. But just again, in summary, we felt that the Skyward software platform was, was an improved platform over what we currently have and certainly the best platform that we saw from the presentations. It is a lower cost, albeit only by 5,000 over five years, but certainly not common that we're able to make some software changes, improve our platform and achieve a lower cost in doing so. So, this will certainly take lots of training. I've been through one of these before and we'll make sure and start early and lean on Patrick all throughout the process.
Good man to lean on.
That's right.
And this might be more directed at Patrick. He has a mic back there, so he's ready. So, when we think about, like, student information systems and things like that, we're running a software already for all our student data, information, transcripts, does that existing platform have an HR component to it that would be easy to turn on and would be cheaper than this? Or is there a reason to separate the two platforms or can you talk me through that a little bit?
Yeah, Edgewood does not have an HR finance. They strictly do the student information system, the SIS. And right now, we're really in a, it used to be where you really wanted to do that. You wanted your systems to be as integrated as possible. Now, we're in the position, just because so many systems can talk to one another, that we want to go out and get the best one. So, and really, our student and our HR finance systems don't really talk to each other that much anyway. They're really pretty, they're pretty independent systems. So, we don't need them to talk to one another.
If you were to need them to talk to in the future, is that something that's possible with those two platforms?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? You know, we hope that it goes smoothly. Levy update.
Hey, well, this is my, well, Mike and I are key communicators, I think is the technical term.
Yeah.
So, if you've got your deck of slides up, oh, here it is. Based on significant study and resulting in budget adjustments, the board passed a unanimous resolution to call for a special election and referendum on May 24, 2018. The purpose of this presentation is for the district administration to provide context for the levy and convey communication efforts underway to inform citizens of its impact. There you go.
So, I'm just going to go over some, some key questions about the levy. It was May 24th, as Kevin said, that the board passed the referendum resolution, so it's been three months since we've talked at a board, at the board level about the levy. Obviously, a lot has happened and so it's time to, to come back and give an update on, on the levy. So, I will go through this. A lot, a lot of people at the table and in the room have heard this before. And so, we'll start with the five key questions about the levy. So, first of all, the why. So, we're going to talk about things like state aid and referendum authority to define the why. The what, so, we're talking about the tiered approach and why that's different than what we have. And then what happens if the levy passes? What happens if the levy fails? So, some investments and consequences. And then how and when, and when to get out to vote. So, first identifying the why. So, why are we asking for the levy? The state has not met its obligation to fund Minnesota schools and the lack of funding impacts budget decisions in our school district. So, we all remember last winter into spring, when our district made 1.6 million in budget adjustments through making expenditure reductions, identifying retirements, through an early retirement incentive, we looked at a Q-COM subsidy, we looked at enrollment changes. All that being said, we made 1.6 million in budget adjustments for 18-19, largely tied to this structural deficit that exists between nominal increases in state aid and increases in inflation and educational expenditures here over the last 15, 16 years. And the end result of that is that for this year, we have more students than we had last year, back to equivalent to 15, 16 levels. So, we have more students and less resources. Right? So, that's going to create some pain for this year. And it's important that we understand that and understand why that happened and talk about that in the, in the confines of the operating levy. And certainly, this is a conversation here, so stop me along the way, we get rolling too fast here. So, the, the impact of inadequate state funding, so, or as we call it, the structural deficit. So, the numbers on this chart are pretty small, but the, the red line here and the green line in 2003 are both tied to the state aid funding formula. So, you can see that the red line, which is inflation in this, in this context, the consumer price index, inflationary measurement, has increased over the last 16 years from 4,966 up to 6,930. Okay? So, that is the state aid funding formula adjusted for inflation over the last 16 years. Okay? Compared to the green line, which is nominal increases in state aid over the last 16 years, going from 4,966 up to 6,312. The difference between 6,930, state aid adjusted for inflation compared to 6,312, actual increases in state aid, is a deficit of $618 per student. Okay?
So, that's just for the one year, though. I mean, if you look at the space between these two lines, we've been short-changed in terms of being able to keep up for many, many years and it increased, and it's over time, it's just continued to build.
Absolutely. And you can see the wide margin there, accounting for the three years between, go back and look at these numbers. It's either '09 to '12 or '08 to '11, the three consecutive years of zero from the state. We are certainly reeling from that here yet today.
Bill, was it even in 2003? I mean, that, that was fully funded in 4,966?
So, no. What, what we did here, it's a great question, is we just tied them, so we, we set state aid, or excuse me, we set the consumer price index equal to state aid.
Okay.
As a starting point.
Okay.
You really should all have that deficit over the last 16 years.
Okay. Thanks.
So, you made the assumption 2003 that we were adequately funded even then?
Uh, no.
In a sense. Well, I mean, that's what appears in the chart, though.
That's what I was... It does, yeah. If you look at it that way, it is somewhat misleading.
Just curious.
Right. And so, I think that's a talking point that might be helpful to people as they, they look at this. We're not saying that we were adequately funded even then in terms of the needs of our students, in terms of, yeah, the needs of our students. So, I understand your question now, Mike. Thank you.
So, where does our revenues come from? So, we have, we have this chart in here because it, it really shows why that structural deficit that exists at the state level is so critical. All right? So, we're talking in this presentation about the operating levy, which is 21% of our pie. But that state aid at 73%, that's just such a large chunk of the pie that when we talk about sort of the 100-year funding of public education, where that 73% goes, that's where our bottom line is going to go. So, that, that 21% is critically important and that's, that's what we're talking about here. But that's why that structural deficit is such a big deal. If those were flipped, for example, and state aid was 21% and the local levy was 73%, that structural deficit wouldn't be as big of an issue. But it's just such a large piece of the pie.
So, over time, has the percent, the local property tax percent, 20%, has that increased over time? Was it smaller originally? See what I'm saying? So, historically, did we get more from, get more coverage of our budget from the state and the local levy is having to take on more and more of the need?
Yes, as an overall, sort of a 15-year summary.
Yes.
When we had in 2014, when we passed our last to go to 743 or 744 per student, that percentage would have jumped as a result of that passage. But overall, yes, that, that's, across the state, you're going to see that property tax is becoming a larger piece of the...
Is that data that we can get, get our heads around in some, not, I mean, not every year, but some key milestones to show how that shifted over time? Does that make sense?
It does, and I can get that information.
Okay. Thank you.
You mean, like a, like a pie chart from previous years?
Well, even if we took a pie chart from five years ago and 10 years ago to show that the local property tax percentage should be, Bill's saying it was smaller historically and it's had to grow over time as the state hasn't kept up with their part of the funding, it would be another visual...
It would be a really good visual.
Right. To show, to tell the story.
So, you could see here that, that we have this, this slide titled Competitive Local Partnership. So, it's important to, to mention first that our, our community has a tradition of community support when it comes to levies. And, and people are somewhat surprised to see this, where we're at with a referendum authority of 1,044 per adjusted pupil unit and how we compare to some of our area school districts and then to the state cap. So, we are over $900 less than the state-approved cap of $1,967 per adjusted pupil unit. And certainly important when we look at this, to not only look at where we're at from a referendum authority per student, but how does that correspond to tax impact? Okay? So, some districts that you see that are a little bit higher on the scale here, South Washington, for example, at $1,837 per student, they have a very different tax makeup than we do here in the Montomedi school district. Right? You drive up and down the 94 corridor, you see a lot more commercial property there, a different tax makeup, means that that same 1,857 costs their taxpayers a different Means that that same 1,857 costs their taxpayers a different amount here than it does in Monomeda, where we're heavily residential. So it's important to understand where we're at from a referendum authority standpoint, but also compare that to what that means from a tax impact standpoint. So for that reason, the board, one of the reasons why the board didn't make a decision to go like up to the state cap, for example, right? The tax hit to our taxpayers would have been, it wouldn't have been sustainable, right? So it's important to understand where we are, but also what that means for our taxpayers. So the result of some of this is that our school district spends and receives less than other districts. So you can see in the middle column there, in the seven-county metro area, the average district in the seven-county metro spends and receives, or spends, or receives 12,500 and spends about $12,500 per student, right? In Monomeda, we spend and receive over $1,200 less per student, right? Partially tied to our referendum authority that we talked about on the previous slide, partially tied to some of the socioeconomic need and the categorical aid related to that, things like title, basic skills, some of that funding, that we understand to be true. We also understand that some of the needs in the classrooms differ, and we understand that that's not going to change. So I just include this slide because I think it's quite remarkable for our kids and our teaching staff, right? That we're consistently a top-10 high school, great scores in the MCA and achievement data, given this, right? So that's something I'd certainly be proud of and to look at as we move forward. So where does the money go in our district? So in District 832, approximately 83.5, unfortunately not 83.2%, of our expenditures is spent on student-based needs. And so really, what that means is that our school district and all school districts in the state of Minnesota are people-intensive organizations, right? So whenever you go through budget reductions, and we heard this last spring, people want to say, "Budget reductions are fine, but you want to keep kids, or cuts away from kids in classrooms," right? Well, 16.5% of our expenditure budget is not on student-based needs, right? And that remaining portion is relatively fixed. And so it's increasingly difficult to keep budget cuts away from kids in classrooms when that big of a piece of the pie is based on, or is spent on student-based needs.
I would argue, though, too, even our administration and support services, I mean, it's still student needs. If you don't have good leadership in your buildings, unfortunately, we do, you would have a different type of culture and things happening in those schools. So I fully support the money we spend here, and want to also stress that it's not what we consider, you know, usually close to the student, but it is close to the student.
Absolutely, well said.
So moving on to the what. So the what part of the presentation, what are we asking? So we've talked about this tiered approach and really the rationale behind that. So there's really three ways that school districts look at operating levies. You have a flat dollar amount, which we have now, and we've had since 2014 the passage of the last referendum. So we're at voter-approved referendum of $744 per student. School districts have looked at voter-approved referendums tied to inflation, and that can be helpful if inflation is going up, but inflation's sort of been all over the place. So that makes things difficult from a budget standpoint for the district and from a tax standpoint for the taxpayer. And then there's this third approach, so this tiered approach. And really, the rationale behind that is understanding that based on our budget projections that this board has talked about, we understand that things are going to cost more in, let's say, year four than they do today, and more in the seventh year than they do in the fourth year. So if you understand that to be true, why not factor that into your ask in 2018, right? In order to hopefully sustain operations for the longer term. And that's really what we've done here. School districts have been successful with this. Minnetoka went out and really marketed this as a conservative approach, and really, it is, right? So we'll talk about the tax impact on the next slide, but instead of going out and asking for the tax impact over the 10 years in the first year, we're going out and asking for what we need in the years that we need it, an incremental increase over time. And so the bottom slide here shows our average residential home value in the school district, and our school district is $350,000, and we'll show tax impact information on the next slide. If the community or the board is interested on what tax impact is on a more personal level, we do have a tax impact calculator on the levy webpage on our school district site, where you can click on that. I'm not going to do it because I'm not quite sure what's going to happen. Oh, I'm getting the thumbs up, so we're going to go for it. So under, oh, it must be underneath this now. So we do have this tax impact calculator that you can click on, obviously a residential calculator in most cases. And you click on the estimated market value, whatever you think the estimated market value of your home is, and click calculate. Ideally, this would be $159 than it is. That'll show you the increase for your personal situation. And I'm lost. So this tiered payment structure, so looking at the tax impact in more detail. And so if you have an average-priced home in our school district, the current voter-approved authority, so the amount that you're paying currently on your property taxes for the voter-approved authority that we've passed is $429. If this passes in November, that will increase from $429 up to $588, an increase of $159, or about $13 a month, okay? And it will stay that. It doesn't increase by $159 every year, it increases by $159 every tier. You can see that on the right-hand side here. So Tier 1, an increase of $159, change in taxes payable in calendar year 2019, stay relatively the same in 2020 and 2021, until the second-tier jump in 2022, stay relatively the same in '23 and '24, and then finally, a third-tier jump in calendar '25, right? And that third tier is a fourth year to get to 2028. So shifting from tax impact to district revenue impact. So these are obviously two very different things, and important to understand that we're able to talk about them and talk about the fact that they are two different things. So as I talked about before, our current voter-approved authority is $743.74 per student. If the levy passes, this amount will be revoked, so it's a revoke and replace on the November ballot, and replaced with $1,020 in the first tier, $1,295 in the second tier, and then topping out at $1,570 in the third tier. So just to tie this all together, the referendum resolution passed in May talked about in total $1 million, or approximately $1 million in new levy revenue. And so if you take this $1,020, and, or the increase from the $743 to the $1,020 multiplied by our adjusted pupil units, that's how you arrive at that figure, okay? And then based on the total referendum market value, if you have a home value to $350,000, that $159 tax impact, added to everything else in our referendum market value, generates that increase of about $275 per adjusted pupil unit. So that's how you tie the tax impact together with the district revenue impact.
So I just have one question. Okay, is that the proper verbiage to say the current voter-approved, because it is actually $443? Should it say something else? So it's...
So you're tracking exactly with me, and it's on the next slide.
Oh, okay.
I'm glad you asked, because this is critically important. So I'm really glad you brought it up.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what's going to get questioned.
Yep. So in the 2014 referendum, the legislature was going through, and Barb and reminded me that in 2015, they, the legislative session in 2015 appropriated this $300 that school boards could bring under board control. And you'll remember, in July, the board passed the resolution to re-up that $300 and bring it under board control again. So it's important that we understand the distinction between voter-approved authority and referendum authority, right? So our voter-approved authority, as it sits right now, is the $744 per student, right? You take the $744 and add to it the $300 that the school board has brought under local control, and that's how you get the $1,044 of referendum authority, right?
So on the previous slide, when you said current voter-approved authority was $428.90, that's minus what?
That's the tax impact, so...
So that's the tax, so that's...
That's what somebody will be paying.
Exactly.
Yes, so, but I think that's confusing by that slide. Do you think that some people might think that that's saying two different amounts of voter-approved authority? You know what I'm saying?
Oh, here.
Page 27, the little house. So current voter-approved authority, current voter-approved authority. So it looks like that, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying that I'm hoping that that's not, I'm hoping that that's not confusing.
So this could say like tax impact on the current authority?
Yes, yes, yes.
It looked clear, don't you think?
Yep, that's a good catch.
Okay, because I think that that could confuse some, that is the actual tax calculator amount.
Great point.
And this is, okay, good.
Oh, great point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, this is why we're doing this, so we can get this out of the way two and a half months before the election. Getting towards the end here, so this is the ballot. This is what's going to be on the ballot, and so always the worry with this tiered approach is that the ballot is going to be overly cumbersome, and I don't, we don't think that it is. So you've seen these numbers before, it just has our current voter-approved authority, and then if approved, what the per-pupil amount will be in the tax year specified on the ballot. So you can see what it is, and it's a 10-year, and then it is a revoke and replace, and we're seeking to replace with a higher amount. And so if it does pass, it will result in an increase to the property taxes for our taxpayers.
Oh, this is me. Is that why you're looking to me?
Yeah.
So, I see, I see, that's what's happening here. So if the levy passes, these are the, so these are the priorities we talked about, reducing class sizes, and this is something we want to have conversation about tonight, and that's why Mike's still in the audience there, to get some principal perspective for you. But reducing class sizes district-wide, and we'll talk a little bit about what they look like this year compared to last year. We'll project what they look like because we're not at the point where we can be certain what they will be until the kids come through the door. But enhancing academic programming, strengthening the safety and security of our buildings, and building financial stability through deficit reduction. So these are the things that we use as our guiding principles, and then we'll talk a little bit more about detail with all of those. And then if the levy fails, we'll need to increase class sizes, kind of the opposite, reduce program offerings, and because of those, we would be reducing staff.
So in the how and when to vote, how and when to vote, so we all know that the election is November 6. We have been careful not to put out absentee ballot information previously because we didn't want people to get that confused with the primaries from last week, and so we've been a conscious effort to wait until after that. So absentee ballots, we can, you can register for one now and mail it back after, mail it or drop it off after September 21st. And we're a little bit crunched on time, so I won't click on this, but if you do, it'll bring you to the Secretary of State's website, and you can request a ballot to be mailed to your home. We do have one slide on open enrollment. We've talked about it for some time, and this is more or less a summary. And so at the last meeting on August 9, the school board did elect to close open enrollment for the 1819 school year, and we will begin taking open enrollment applications for the 1920 school year on September 4. We do have down the strong schools support strong communities, the same way strong communities support strong schools, and that open enrollment affords students curriculum and extracurricular opportunities that otherwise would not be afforded. Certainly, there are some challenges to open enrollment that we have discussed before, setting an enrollment target. Lucy mentioned about the grade progression ratios, and so we're sort of going through a new process with that, and so it'll be nice to get into the second year this winter of tracking those grade progression ratios and how that all comes through, and then accounting for residual move-ins and move-outs, and making sure that we're careful about tracking how all of that flows through as well. And then finally, how are we communicating about the levy? So Alice, our communications specialist, has done a wonderful job of setting up a lot of what you see here, our webpage, so we do have a levy information page off of our district website that has a lot of great information about voting, about district facts and questions, everything you could want to know related to the levy, you can generally find it on the levy webpage. Mailed information to residents, printed information at events and meetings, email information, social media updates. We had a meeting on Tuesday that Mike and Kevin attended for key communicators, and then community events and district community meetings, that we're going to get to, a schedule of that on the next slide, and that's also on the district website as well. And if we would allow, we have created a video, or the district has created a video on information related to the levy, and so we'd like to show that now.
I'm worried you'd choke me out when I saw it.
Monomeda is my home. I have been blessed, and I am thankful to be able to be a part of such a great district.
Wonderful job. We're doing wonderful things for our kids, and then they go off and emote those positive things wherever they're going.
We have athletes, we have artists, we have scholars, we have leaders. They all come together and rally around this idea of being a Zephyr.
Our parents are a foundation for our school's success. Our teachers are committed, they're passionate, they're innovative. We are so fortunate to have a community that loves and supports its schools.
Unfortunately, the state over the last 15 years has not met its obligation with funding school districts. This is causing many school districts, Monomeda included, to make reductions in their general fund year after year. For that reason, on November 6, we will be asking our district taxpayers to vote on a tiered increase to our operating levy in order for the district to maintain and enhance operations and financial stability over the long term.
If the levy passes, our priority is to reduce class sizes district-wide and enhance academic programming. We also want to prioritize safe and secure buildings and build financial stability through deficit reduction.
We, as a district, have really gone out of our way to take the time and the effort to put those students first and to give them the tools that they need.
The district has worked hard to keep the class sizes down so that the teachers can develop relationships.
Kids are challenged to think outside that box, and teachers are there to support them along the way.
Monomeda is so much more than just a number on a test. We offer so many activities. Over 93% of our high school students participate in an activity or a club. We have something for every student.
When 83% of our general fund is spent on student-based expenditures, that means that our district continues to do a great job of focusing on needs for kids in the classrooms.
If the levy does fail, we'll need to increase class sizes, reduce program offerings, and as a result, reduce staff.
We need a strong school district in order to have strong cities.
Any realtor selling a piece of property, the first thing that they talk about is it's located in Monomeda schools. Property owners benefit from having strong schools.
On an average-priced home, if the operating levy is approved, the taxpayer impact would be $159 in the first year, or approximately $13 per month.
I am absolutely proud of this district. You couldn't have a better place for your kids to go to school.
Once you're a Zephyr, you're always a Zephyr.
So a lot of the information that we've talked about tonight, just with a lot less ums and pauses and awkwardness, so that's good. I believe that's our last slide. Oh, we do have community meetings that we've talked about, so it's important that we meet people where they are, and for that reason, we're going to have meetings in each of the buildings, and then here at the District Education Center, starting with O.H. Anderson the end of September.
Can you go there and talk more about some of the specifics? I know you asked Mike to stay the night to talk about the impacts of passing or not passing a district under plan.
No, we can certainly talk about some class size, class sizes is what we've been trying to, right?
Do you have, do you want to start with a specific question, or we can launch into it?
So, you know, I look at these things, and we had a conversation earlier, I know, but to share my thoughts with the rest of the board, I mean, I look at reducing class sizes or increasing class sizes, I mean, it's the flip of the coin of what happens. And, you know, as a community member, as a parent, I think, oh, one more child or one less child, there's not a huge impact there, but if we're talking five kids, and so I guess I'm really looking for, do we have enough information and language out to our community about the details of this? I mean, to say just class size doesn't really impact it, where if I know we're taking one of my child's classes at the high school from 25 kids to 30 kids, that's a different response. And we know from our work historically as a board that people react to things in two ways. We have people who react emotionally, and we have people who react based upon data. And I find with these, you know, short bullet points here, I can't react either way. And so I'm struggling there.
Sure. I don't need details necessarily tonight, but I'm just wondering if they're going to come eventually.
Yes, they will come eventually. And I think, so one thing I guess I'll suggest is that what we will want to do is still keep kind of the short, increase class size, but then give detail on our website. So through, what would that, through our FAQ, we have a frequently asked question section, so what would that look like by building, for example? Now, one thing I can see is, so Patrick has recently made me fairly independent with being able to look up class sizes over time. So I've started looking back over time, and I can see comparing the XU class sizes, which is what you've used as a guiding principle. We had been previously lower. Last year, we were lower, particularly at middle school and high school. The elementary, we were pretty much right on or a little bit above. If I look for next year, or this coming school year, it is clear that our high school and middle school are going to be quite a bit above. I was looking at maybe, whereas they were below by maybe one or two, now they're above, I see above by three in some cases, whereas our elementary are a little bit closer. Now, I say all this, and I want you to know that we need to... Now, I say all this, and I want you to know that we need to look at the first, we need to see who comes through our door and how the class sizes really pan out. But that's partly why Mike is here to talk a little bit about middle school. It is, it's difficult, once you get to the secondary, to talk about class size in the same way that you can talk about it at the elementary. At elementary, you say you have a classroom teacher, students are assigned there, and you could talk about that class size. At the secondary, it's a little different because of scheduling and because of student choices, because of the leveling, for example, of math, and where do those classes break? At the high school, with electives, that could make a difference as well, and who's taking PSEO. So when we talk about class size at the secondary level, it's a little bit more difficult to really quantify that in the same way. So one thing that Bill and I have been talking about is trying to talk about this is staffing ratios and be able to show it that way, to your point. And we could also see, when Bill and I were working on that, we can see that at the secondary that has increased already. I mean, I think that's one thing you should know, is this past year has made a really huge impact on the secondary class sizes compared to last year. Our elementary, we've been able to monitor those and hold those pretty well. But I think one thing that you will know is that when students walk in in the fall, things will be noticeably different. But Mike can also speak a little bit to that, in particular, 6th and 7th grade.
Right, but we had to decrease the section in 6th and 7th grade. And so so far, I think there's been six or seven teachers coming in the last week to start working in rooms, and I've gotten six or seven, the custodians have gotten six or seven requests to put more desks in their rooms, because they want to try to figure out how they fit in. In the past, we may have had, we've tried not to have more than 31 kids in a class, and that might be one class. A teacher might have one class of 31, and the rest would be 27, 28, somewhere around there. Now 31 is probably the normal, but now we're more like 33. A teacher might have two or three classes of 33. We might even be eking into 34, 35. And it goes through all. Music, where before we may have had 33 kids in a music class, like in choir, now we're up around 40, 41 kids in a music class, because we had to cut sections in there as well. And as you know, we've lost that teaming aspect in 6th and 7th grade by cutting a section. And so, you know, we're going to have to find ways to meet about kids and make that smaller community. But just in class size itself, we're up probably, on average, about three kids a class, or three, you know, in 6th and 7th grade especially. And this year, we have 10 sections in 8th grade, which helps immensely, since now we're up to about 296 8th graders are coming through the door. So again, that's bigger, but in 6th and 7th grade, we're down to nine sections with, you know, quite a few kids. And so that's really, it's really, people are starting to feel the effects. They're coming, checking their schedules, and I think once parents come and students come, they're going to feel those same effects too.
So because we can't look at class sizes the same way, elementary, secondary, I completely understand what you're saying about how that doesn't work in the same sorts of ways. Is there another way we can get at this change in terms of communication to the community? And so as you think about what you're saying, you've got teachers coming in early to begin to work on their classrooms and things, do you think there are statements or quotes that we can get from teachers to talk about how they've had to change, thinking about their instruction, thinking about their curriculum, thinking about, you know, their students with this change in structure because of the middle school model, and change in numbers of students in those classrooms? And so even the simple fact that, you know, 90% of our teachers that you've met with this week have asked for more desks. I mean, you know, sends that different understanding of what that means to the community, and I'm not sure if that would help us in telling that story, but I feel like this by itself doesn't tell me anything.
Sure.
And so that's what, I mean, is that something you think teachers would be willing to share?
Oh, I'm sure they'd be... I just want to make sure, you know, again, as all of us, we'll be feeling the squeeze in some ways, and, you know, but we still are going to have things in place, new things in place to support kids. And we're not going to let higher class size be the excuse or the detriment to us. But you're right, they're going to have to change the way they teach, they're going to change the way they group kids, they're going to have to be very intentional about what they're doing, because even just three kids, and we're going from 30 to 33, can make a huge difference in those classrooms.
I appreciate you kind of got that balance, you know, that we are not going to let kids falter cracks, we're not going to, we're intended to the needs, but it does change things, and how to send that message is going to be difficult.
Yep, it will be.
The other thing I'd say at the, oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? Okay, the other thing I'd just suggest at the high school level, what, another thing that is evident is that over time, and this past year, no exception, that electives for students have been reduced. So the choices that students have have also been reduced as a result of the change in the staffing ratio. So even though it's difficult to talk about class size, there are other things that we'll be talking about that have hit, but their class sizes are larger as well.
But it's not only electives. I don't, my daughter specifically, sorry, Kevin.
Someday.
You know, it's hitting our core subjects too. I mean, we have had to do away with the section of AP Chem because it's a budget cut. And it was clearly explained to me by administration from the parent perspective of why and how this happens and how that impacts my daughter's schedule. And because of that, my daughter's not able to take AP Chem. And so I get that as a parent, you know, and I have to wear multiple hats and things. But so it's not only our electives, it's impacting our core curriculum.
Our choices for students.
Our choices for students, that's a good point.
I'll say it that way.
I don't want to say anything else. Kevin.
All right. So, I mean, to piggyback off what you're saying, that is, as a parent, to lose some of the choice that you've been expecting to have as you, kids are aging through, and all of a sudden, when you get there, they're gone. You know, that's, that can be pretty painful for families, and so I agree with that. On, you know, whether the levy passes or fails, especially if the levy passes, I would urge caution as to making promises that we cannot deliver. And in the past, we have done that. And so, you know, I agree that maybe this is a little generic, but if we said, if we pass this levy, we're going to add back whatever, and we cannot deliver on that, that's the worst thing at all. And I remember some of these in the past where we've said, we're going to do this, and we don't, and then people are quite upset. So, you know, let's make sure, really sure, on our messaging, that if we're going to do something, if the levy passes, we're really able to do it. Otherwise, I'd urge caution on that.
Number three, people up for reelection. You know, that just says that, you know, if there wasn't a board member, potentially there could be, then the board member might not be on board. So that's another...
Yep, yep.
Any other comments?
Thank you for all this work. It's nicely put together, it's clear, some additional details, maybe not here, depends on what you're saying, but available to board members and key communicators and things that can help strengthen the area, help when you're starting out in the field, talking to people. When those questions come up, chat with additional information would be very helpful. So thank you.
Well, in addition to having it for you, we'll have it for the public as well.
Right, right.
Could I just say one, I wrote down impact examples, because you said like the impact example on student ratios, but, you know, maybe impact examples about if we increase class sizes, this is a scenario that could happen, and if we decrease class sizes, this is a scenario that could happen.
Yes, thank you. And that's something that we've been talking about in the administrative team, so, thanks.
Also, in an email this week, MSBA sent out a flyer, a link to a flyer about board members and levies and do's and don'ts. And so if you didn't pull that down when that came out through the email, I recommend that you go find that and look at that. It's a very good resource. If you don't find it, let me know, I'll send it to you.
One of the questions I have is a key communicator, and this might be directed more at the citizens group, but it sounds like house parties are happening, and I don't know, I don't have a feel for if the people doing these house parties want board members to attend. And I, for one, am willing to go wherever the wind takes me, so that, and I could talk to Kate about that, just to find out what the schedule is and what she would like us to be doing, because I think that's really important, that we as board members are all going to use these parties. She sent us, she sent...
She sent us a link so that we would all be able to see what the schedules were.
Not for us to sign up to lead something, but just so we knew. And I did tell her that we would be willing to man any table, or, I mean, to go to any of the parties she's having, to back up information and support the decisions we've made at any of the parties to answer questions. So hopefully she reaches out if they want us there. But thank you, thank you for the video.
Yes, nice, nice.
That's really powerful, really great to have that ready to go at the start of the square.
And Alice deserves, thank you. Alice deserves a lot. She's done a great job with all this stuff, too.
Thank you. Thank you. That's a powerful, powerful statement.
The meeting's listed at the end. Is there any reason all of us can't be there, or do we have to limit our number of who's there? Will it be posted so we can all attend?
I don't know the answer to that. I think if you, I think you can go and listen in that, yeah, I think you can go and listen without trouble, without anything, but if you were having a...
I bet that MSBA thing might give clarity to.
It would probably, I would advise you all to know who's going to what meeting so that you're clear.
Why don't we just post them?
You could post them all.
Why don't we just post them? In the past, when we've gone, we just haven't all sat together.
Right, right.
But why don't we post them? So it's...
We've also been to meetings where more of us were there than public.
Correct. That does happen a lot. Those information meetings. We were the only ones, maybe, and judged.
And judged.
And judged.
Is that what you'd like to do then? Have them posted? Do you got Laura on that travel?
Might as well.
Why not? Yeah.
You know, you just don't know where people will, when we did one of those dinners at Dale and Jam's, I posted that we did this dinner, and someone said, no, you can't do that well. Of course, you can. If it's a social thing that doesn't involve school business, it's perfectly permissible. And we did make good food, so.
So you're just talking about the Guide to Six Main Queens project on that last night. Anything else? Laura, your turn.